Join the club?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just sunk a bunch into a new great area.
I will call the special media of the Board of Aldermen to order at 7:10. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Patricia Piazza and Alderman Lopez will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have a high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Willshire.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Tenza.
Here.
Alderman Cookson. Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Siegel. Alderman Shuniman. Alderwoman Malisi Gola.
Present.
Alderman McGinnis. Alderman LeBrun.
Here.
Alderman Moriarty. Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman McCarthy.
Present.
We have eight members present.
Also present Corporation Counsel Stephen Bolton. The mayor is unable to attend this evening. He has family in town and he has an obligation there, so he will not be joining us. Communications? Alderman Willsire?
Thank you. I move that all communications be read by title only.
Motion is that communications be read by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Communication from Brian S. McCarthy, President, Board of Aldermen, relative to Special Board of Aldermen meeting.
Alderman Willsire?
Move to accept and place on file.
Motion is to accept the communication and place it on file. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. This evening, the sole item on the agenda is a discussion with the Nashville delegation to the state legislature. I want to keep it fairly free form, so it might be a good idea if we just go around and everybody introduce themselves and if you're a state rep or a senator and you're involved with specific legislative things that we might be interested in, tell us about those. If you're an Alderman or an Alderman-elect, talk about what things you might want to talk about and we'll see where the discussion goes from there. Alderman Lopez, you want to start?
My name is Tom Lopez. My specific priorities at Alderman are infrastructure, road repave, sidewalk repair, public transportation, and then we also have a continuing need for low-income housing or fixed-income housing, particularly for the elderly here in Nashville.
I'm Representative Allison Nutting from Ward Seven.
I'm Representative Marion McKay. I'm from Ward Seven and I filed legislation this year to repeal 155-D with the assistance of the Nashua Building Inspector and with the BCRB, the Building Code Review Board. And the reason I filed it is because it's a moot point. New Hampshire started that legislation before we all adopted the International Energy Conservation Code. And so, because of that reason, we filed it. I sit on HHS and I guess that's, oh, one piece of legislation, my guardianship for grandparents, the preference on that one. Because we were first in the country to introduce it, I'm going to Nashville, the beginning of December, to introduce that legislation as model legislation for the country.
Don LeBrun, Representative from Ward Five, and I have five pieces of legislation I've filed that are pertinent to Nashua. The first one is based on the state building code. I have one on exploitation of the elderly and disabled. Another one I have is enabling the Department of Health and Human Services to enter into a contract with an academy society for addiction medicine. Also, I have one on food service inspections, inspections of restaurants and food service And the last one I have is relative to pharmacy interns and vaccinations. In the past, I have had legislation passed to enable pharmacies to give the pneumococcal vaccine, the zoster vax and such, and this is just a continuation of that. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alderwoman Marion Malisi Golia and I represent Ward Eight. In terms of priorities for the city, I chair planning and economic development and certainly feel both sides of that are important. On the economic development side, I've began conversations during the summer with the National Regional Planning Commission, NRPC, about looking at the economic impact of the arts within our region, within the region covered by NRPC. And that conversation is actually going to move forward next month with members of the arts community here in Nashua. So, we're really trying to look at what exactly does the arts bring to our community and what can we do to better position the Nashua region within the state as well as any supports that may be needed. Within economic development, also looking at what's happening in the city and looking at housing and workforce housing, looking at people who are coming in and maybe entering our community with college degrees but entering their profession at the beginning in a lower level job and looking at what they can afford to pay and what we have available for them in terms of rentals or even properties to purchase. So, they're able to both live and work in the same community and stay here and grow their families. As we look at trying to bring young families in, affordability of housing is one of the things we need to look at. As a past school board member, I am always interested in what's going on to support families and children, birth through adult, and looking at funding for our schools and how they're being supported. Thank you.
I'm Rick Dowd. I'm the Alderman from Ward Two. And as Chair of Budget, I have two things of concern. One is I'm looking forward to the kindergarten funding coming down from the state. And the other is I'd like to find out from the delegates, are there any unexpected bills that we might get in the next budget season?
Oh, may I just say something? Alderman McCarthy?
Sure.
Some of you, I know, were at the meeting for the ten-year transportation plan and I think you heard us discuss the pedestrian and vehicular traffic situation in South Nashua. So, looking at funds there and what we can do to assist with the congestion around Exit One, Spitbrook Road, Daniel Webster Highway. As many of you know, we have a very high concentration of citizens who live in that area as well as businesses that are developing there. So, we have concerns about both foot traffic and getting cars in and out of the area. So, looking at where the ten-year plan is going. We have one item on the plan that addresses the pedestrian issues and the other item that we spoke to that evening, which is not on the plan but is a concern about getting traffic in and out of the Flatley property. Thank you.
I'm Marty Jack. I'm representing Ward Nine and I sit on Public Works and Highways. The three main areas that I work on are infrastructure, that means roads, bridges, and rail, and I appreciate the Alderman bringing up the item on the ten-year plan. We'll be getting that shortly and I'll make sure I keep my eye on that. The other is public education. In the context of where I sit on the committee, that primarily means making sure that the community colleges get money that they need to start up programs. The community colleges are a wonderful bang for the buck in terms of getting people educated, keeping them in the state, and getting them jobs. And then the third is healthcare. That means getting as many people onto health insurance as possible. Representative LeBrun didn't mention House Bill 124, which is held over from last year and that, thank you, and that, I'm pleased to report, came out of the Ways and Means Committee with a 22 to 1 ought to pass as amended, and that will be taken up on the first Wednesday in January.
And that's the reduction of aircraft registration?
Yes, that's the aircraft registration bill.
Or our lone success story from last time.
Now I don't have to mention it.
Our pension bills didn't do so hot. We tried.
Hi, I'm considered Board of Aldermen-elect and I'm here to listen and hear what the state and the city has to say.
I am Representative Jan Schmidt from Ward One and my committee up in Concord is labor. I have quite a few bills in with my name on them, but I don't think anything is going to impact the city itself. Although I have looked through most of the bills that have been flipped, there are some really interesting bills there that are going to affect the city. And I'd really like to work with everyone here to make sure that they don't impact us in a bad manner. Other than that, thank you for holding this tonight.
You got it?
Sorry. I'm State Rep from Nashville, Ward Eight, Lata Manjipudi, and my focus, one, I'm really excited to say that one of the bills, that first bill that I ever introduced by myself and it passed, that was the Rotary License Plate and it's a special kind of plate that has decal on it and Rotary District 7870 was the first one to get the decal approved. So, it's in law, so it's a special plate and they would get, the Rotary would get the, the state gets all the funding, the extra $15 that people have to pay to get that special license plate and they put the decal on it. So, there's added its specialty plate. So, I'm happy about that. And my other focus has been local in terms of culture and art exchange and last year when, after the Sister City Initiative passed, several of the, there were five people that went from Nashua to Misor and there was a team that came from India on integrative medicine and yoga and the Indian government had, has shown a great deal of interest in starting a Center for Excellence here in Nashua and, which means the partnership. And I'm trying to figure out who's going to put the first dollar down and so I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to stay here and fight for that, make, work hard to make that happen. And especially the focuses on heal the hurt for the pain management and substance use disorder population, to build resiliency and sustainable, cost-effective alternative in building the mental health and resiliency and the other, same area, increasing the youth mental health and well-being and resiliency in schools. I've been talking with Superintendent and also, again, Misor Yoga Center and NIMHANS is very, National Institute of Mental Health and Neurosciences and Misor is very interested in having a collaborative work and this is in the works. So, a lot of work, a lot of phone calls, a lot of driving around. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Willshire. I chair the Human Affairs Committee. I think my focus over the last 18 years on the board has been to work to help the nonprofits in the city, provide services to those at risk in our community. I also am the liaison to the police department. I like to make sure that our streets are safe and that we continue to support the needs of our public service, the police, fire, especially with the opioid epidemic out there and, you know, it's, our community has really stepped up and done some really great things, so pretty much it.
Brian McCarthy, the President of the Board. I think a lot of my focus, at least with respect to discussions with the state, have been on the general financial well-being of the city and things like the retirement system as well as issues around economic development such as the aircraft registration fee change, which I think is very beneficial to Nashua in particular. And beyond that, I spend a lot of time on planning issues and budget, et cetera. Betty?
Hello. Hi, I'm State Senator Betty Lasky and I am vice-chair of the Judiciary Committee and serve on the Commerce Committee. I will be prime sponsor, our bills from the Senate have, we've not yet had to sign off on them, so they are still in somewhat of a state of flux. But I will be doing a couple of election law. Our city clerk will be happy to hear that. One is about not sharing information, such as the fiasco we had with our Secretary of State this summer. The other would be closing a loophole for campaign finance from spending general election funds in a primary, which was done by the soon-to-be former mayor of Manchester. I believe I'm prime on another one and I will be doing many co-sponsoring. I know one, we hope to have the repeal of the death penalty back again and there'll be quite a few other laws coming through judicial, or bills coming through judiciary, which I'll work on. And certainly if there's anything that the board needs to put in, oftentimes it's easier to get a late bill in through the Senate than it is through the House, so I'm happy to do that.
You have to hold it down a little bit.
Suzanne Harvey, State Rep from Ward Two. I'm on the Science, Technology, and Energy Committee, which is particularly wonky about the electric grid, sources of electricity, all the utilities, the Public Utility Commission, energy efficiency, renewable resources for energy. These are the kinds of bills that we deal with and I've been on that for several terms. Energy efficiency is high on the list of priorities for me and a lot of my colleagues because it's the cheapest form of energy. It's the energy that you actually don't use. So, the goal of most people interested in this is to have an electric grid that's reliable and hopefully is based on clean energy sources. So, the other thing I want to mention is I've been involved for many years on the issue of human trafficking and I'm on the statewide, it's a collaborative task force on human trafficking and we're having, it's not the task force that's doing it, but actually Harbor Homes and the school system putting on, on December 6th, at Harbor Homes on High Street at 5:30, a forum on youth homelessness. And my particular interest is that homeless youths are so much at risk for human trafficking. They're the first easy praise for a trafficker. So, I urge you to show up if you're free that night and learn what you can because it's a very important subject. We do have homeless kids, several hundred in Nashua, and we want to keep them safe. Thanks.
Hi, Sue, excuse me, Sue Newman, and I'm in my first term as a State Rep from Ward Two. I was on Public Works, I am on Public Works and Highways with Marty Jack and I would echo his comments that there was a lot of infrastructure, roads, bridges, and quite a bit of presentations about the bus systems that are in the state. I particularly was interested in rail. Any comment about rail did not get very far in our committee this session. Things might change, I don't know. As an old school board member, I remain exceptionally interested in public schools and how they are funded, ideally to be adequately funded. That's all.
Hi, I'm Patricia Cle, Ward Three, State Rep and Ward Three, Ward Elect, Alderman Elect, sorry. I'm on the State, Federal, and Veterans Committee and we deal with almost nothing with veterans. We deal mostly with constitutional law, I guess, changing our constitution, trying to secede from the state, I mean, from the United States, just different things like that. I was a little disappointed that we don't deal with as many veterans issues as we thought and Lata's on that committee, so she understands what I'm talking about. It can be very frustrating. We should be doing more. what I'm talking about. It can be very frustrating. We should be doing more for our veterans and we're not. But that was my hope. After working 26 years with the Veterans Administration, I had hoped that some of my experience would help there and it really didn't. We are hoping to create a Veterans Administration within the VA, but even that, I don't think it's going to be what they were hoping it would be. As an Alderman Elect for Ward Three and for Nashua, I guess the things I'm interested in are the infrastructure, trying to do affordable housing, what we can do, much of what you were talking about. The affordable schools and school funding is also something extraordinarily important to me. I want to see more public school dollars. And that doesn't necessarily mean that's something I can do as an Alderman, but hoping that, this is my first year, hoping to have a second year and maybe we can work on some kind of more alternate funding for the, less for the private schools and more for the public schools. I've been working with NAMI now since late spring and trying to come up with ideas, plans, funding, grants, et cetera, to reduce the amount of warehousing of mental health patients in our ERs. And the last time I got a figure, I think it was 57 throughout the state. And that's 57 patients that are living in our ERs throughout the state. Concord has the most of them and they create these things called yellow pods, where they keep the patients in. It's literally a small ER room for mental health patients and they can live up to a year, two. The average length of stay, I think, was 37 days, which is a long time. And that's because there's no space at the state hospital. There's only one bill that my name is on, and I'm a co-sponsor of that, and it's HB 1236. And that is, again, dealing with mental health. Right now, the way the statute's written is the Superior Court or Circuit Court can just say with a stroke of a pen, mental health court is done. Without taking into consideration anything with the presiding judge or anything like that. So what we're trying to do is put a committee together that would say that the presiding judge, the mental health court manager, law enforcement, the prosecution and the defense representative would all have, we'd have a committee and they would have to say that it wasn't necessary. So, other than that, not much.
My name's Dave Alderman. My concerns, areas of focus, I guess, would be making sure that the city implementing all the best practices as they relate to the response to the heroin crisis, that we are working together, making sure that people are able to get the services that they need locally here.
I would also be interested in working as an Alderman, Melizzi Goldja talked about on housing issues, in particular as it relates to working families, families who are trying to...
Good evening, Alderman Lodge, Michael O'Brien. Where for the city, I'm on the Budget, Finance and Substandard Housing Commission and also just recently appointed to the newly-formed Rail Committee. I'm very excited about that. As far as the state, I've been up at the House for about 10 years. I've been on the same committee, the Transportation Committee, and served twice as its vice-chair. I didn't write any bills this year. The other 399 of you are doing okay with it, so. But what I choose to do, as far as my committee, I watch what comes through and pick and choose which ones have the merit that need to come through. One of the ones was no taxing while driving. That took two terms to work on it and I think it's one of the best laws we ever passed in the state. I can't tell you how many kids or people we have saved in that endeavor. The other thing is on the transportation. We come to talk a lot about the commuter rail service. And unfortunately this year, we received a bill that came through, was to eliminate the rail authority in its entirety. Well, I think, Mr. President, the other great save from the delegation was to keep that rail authority for the state in place. It's going to go before the House and everything else. It's too bad that it came up in the form to get rid of it. And I think that's going to go hand in hand with the new city objective, with the, what we're entering into with the new group at the Providence Surface Rail Commission there. And we're going to need the DOT and everything else. So I know, I'm very proud of our delegation in Nashua. We seem to be, no pun intended, but all on board in commuter rail in the State House and working with it. Because I do believe that's going to be the key economic, one of the key economic things, that if we can punch a hole through 128 and get commuter rail from Boston, get it up here to Nashua, it goes both ways. We're going to open up the door to economic vibrancy in the city that we have never seen since probably the 1800s. So I think this is something that really needs to be done in the future. And that'd be it. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ernie Jettie. I'm the newly-elected Alderman Elect from Ward Five. And I'm new to the board, so I've got a lot to learn, I know that. But while I'm here with, I'm a little disappointed that there aren't more representatives here this evening. I see Alderman LeBrun is here, who's also a state rep from our ward, and I appreciate his being here. I wish there were more reps here. Because when I was running for office, one of the, a couple of the themes that people kept talking to me about was, number one, the schools, what they feel is a lack of support for our schools in the city, and also taxes. And the two kind of work hand in hand. People legitimately don't want their taxes to go up, but, but people tell me that the reason that the city is under such pressure for taxes is because the state legislature keeps pushing fiscal, financial responsibility down to the local cities and towns. And I would like our, I hope that our representatives are, in the, in the state legislature, would be watchdogs for us and would, would resist this, this trend that has been going on for a number of years of pushing responsibility for education, responsibility for, you know, roads, infrastructure, down to the cities. Putting on to the cities and the retirement fund, pushing more and more fiscal responsibility to the city, which is putting the city in a very difficult position to avoid raising the taxes. And, and people see their taxes going up and they blame it on the city. But I, I think part of, a big part of the problem is the federal government is giving us less money and the state is giving us less money. So you representatives, I hope that you will protect us as much as you can. I know you're only a small number of the 400 up there, but I hope that you watch out for that for us. Thank you.
I'm Trisha Pietz, I'm the city clerk.
Steve Bolton, I'm the City Corporation Counsel. And among other things, I and the other two lawyers in the office provide support, guidance and counsel to the Board of Alderman, largely in the form of preparing legislation and giving advice and opinions on law at all levels.
I'll open it up for anybody that wants to speak. Representative Manjapuri, did you want to say something?
This question is to the legal counsel. In terms of MOU that was signed for the Sister City Initiative, it was like a very broad thing. So is there a specific way at the government level or city to city, any exchange of funds or programs establishing? I seem to be going in circles in terms of finding a landing spot. So is, if you could shed a little bit of light, would help.
Are you talking about this initiative for the rail?
No. The Sister City Initiative between Misor and Nashua. And if there is, I think there's, I didn't bring the copy, but it, there was, you know, technology, ideas, programs, exchange of those, very broadly specified that. And I think with the cultural exchange and art exchange kind of thing, there is, there is an opportunity to do it. So if it's financially, it's, cities are coming into play.
I, I am unaware of what might be going on in that regard. This question might better be addressed, and unfortunately, they're not here tonight, but the mayor or the Economic Development Director, Tim Cummings. But I don't know of any, well, I have not been contacted concerning any further legal issues surrounding the program.
Not, not legal issues. How does the memorandum, addendum to the MOU, would that be a full board vote or is it just adding to the addendum to the MOU?
Well, it would certainly be possible if there was a desire to enter into further programs, exchanges or something to modify the MOU by adding addenda to it or alter provisions that presently exist. I've not been contacted in that regard at all, however.
Can I further ask a question?
Actually, the, I mean, the issue that you're bringing up has, is not about the interaction with the legislature particularly. So I would, I would advise you to take it up with the mayor.
Okay.
Representative slash Alderman LeBrun.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to go back to HB 124, the aircraft bill, and explain it for those who are not familiar with it. The reason I filed the bill is because New Hampshire finds itself in a unique position. All the surrounding states have either eliminated or drastically reduced their registration fees. In New Hampshire, a corporate aircraft can cost $300,000 to register. In Massachusetts, you can do it for $300. Massachusetts has also done away with their sales tax on aircraft and aircraft parts. So that was the reason I originally filed the bill. And what we did was, as we went along, we modified it and changed some of the registrations on private aircraft as well. There's a 10-year plan similar to the automobile registration, that it decreases over a period until you get to 10 years and you pay nothing. But the corporate, the corporations, in fact, in Portsmouth, Green Mountain Coffee was at the negotiating table when they got a phone call and said, knock off negotiations with New Hampshire, we're going to Massachusetts. The green building down on, I think it's, is it 28 or 128, is what Green Mountain Coffee built. There's probably 10,000 jobs down there that they took down there with them. So that's, that was the reason for filing the bill. We have to come in line with the, what the states around us are doing. We're surrounded by states that have either eliminated or drastically reduced the registration fees. So, that's it.
Just to follow up on that, there was a lot of discussion when that bill took place of, what are we going to do with the revenue we lose because we won't be getting the $300,000, to which the response was, we're not getting it now. I mean, people, I talked with people who deal in airplanes and they would say, their customers would come and say, I want you to get me one of these and I want it to be 10 years and one day old when I take possession of it, so that I get out of the registration fee. And we, we currently actually have a fairly large number of very expensive jets operating out of Nashua to, to our great economic benefit. And they're, actually, I mean, they're, the jets now, it used to be we had a lot of worries about noise, but the, with the stage three noise regulations, the jets that are here are very quiet. And like I say, there are, there were 1.21 of them on the airport, which you hardly ever see them out, you know, they're either in the hangar or they're flying, so. But, but that, that has brought a number of companies to Nashua that are beneficial. There's a company that's developing new infrared cameras so that planes can basically land in zero visibility fog. And, you know, we're getting, we're getting some really good economic benefits out of those planes being here.
Just to add on to that, that bill, I think, is so important and I think most of us just think of, the airport is there and it's the airport. And none of us, I think, fully appreciate, or few of us fully appreciate, the economic impact the airport has in terms of companies who are here, as well as just the jobs that are there and the services that are being provided to the planes that are flying in and out. So, increasing traffic at the airport is certainly something that's important for our community.
Alderman LeBrun?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to add to what's been said about this bill, we have found a way to make it revenue neutral. I believe it was $1.2 million we were going to lose if the bill went through in its original form. And we found a way by amending the bill and re-amending it as the process went along, to make it revenue neutral. So the state is not going to lose anything.
Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, not to completely pivot, but some other comments were made following mine regarding the vulnerability of children to human trafficking when they're homeless, the need to have affordable housing. And I was just reminded of an effort that Alderman and Representative O'Brien was working on towards the beginning of last year, where it came to light through discussion at the Substandard Living Conditions Committee, that it's a fairly regular practice for a landlord who's filing an eviction of a tenant, to file it in a city other than where they are necessarily able to appear in court to defend themselves. And I think this is a protection against inappropriate eviction. If anything, it doesn't seem very just to me that somebody who is in the process of being evicted and may not have transportation to a different city, has to go there to just defend themselves. So I know this was an effort that did not succeed in the State House, and I would love for it to be reevaluated or looked at and followed up on. I think if somebody is going to face eviction or be told to leave their home, then the least we can do is make sure they can get to the court.
I have a bill in on that this year, Alderman Lopez. I'll pass that on to you and let you take a look at it.
Very efficiently done then.
Yeah, to Alderman Lopez, I, unfortunately, I ran into a wall that, where some people up there come from many walks of lives and some people who sit particularly in the Senate were former landlords themselves. And did I think it really got a fair shake? I don't know. I have my opinion on that particular matter. But anyways, I think the climate up there right now is not conducive to a bill like that. And I'm hoping maybe we'll see, maybe in the next biennium, things might be a little bit more where a bill such as that. Because you're correct in bringing it up, just because the bill failed, but the need did not go away. And that could happen very well in, you know, today as well. So it still needs to be addressed. And I agree with you. And I'd be happy to sponsor that. Or if Representative LeBrun has one of equal in tenure, I would support that equally as well, too.
Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, one of the things that's concerned me over the last couple of years, because I've had a family experience with it, is, is healthcare in the state of New Hampshire. Two areas that I think the state is trying to assist with but failing miserably is healthcare for the elderly and the veterans. Veterans, just start with them. To get any kind of hospital service, has to go out of state to get it. You have a clinic where they used to have a hospital. I know there's a lot of work being done on that to, to help that, so that's good. I don't know how many of the reps have been to the nursing homes in the state of New Hampshire. I'll have to say they do a great job, but they have very limited resources, limited staffing, very limited funding. And, and through no fault of their own, I don't think the elderly are getting the services that they actually deserve. And I think that needs to be looked into. The, the other thing is... The, the other thing is, I heard a lot about Medicaid, Medicaid funding, and not having enough of it. If you ever had to apply for Medicaid here in the state of New Hampshire, you'd find out it's a daunting task, extremely difficult for the people that actually need it, the elderly, trying to figure out all the paperwork and the process. I will say the Department of Health and Human Services has great people. They go out of their way to help you, but they're understaffed, probably underfunded, and I think they need some help. I've talked to former Senator Ayotte about this, and it's, it's very disheartening, the process that it takes.
Sorry, Rick.
Nice.
Pick a different music selection. It's very disheartening to see how many people are missing out on, on the help that they could get through Medicaid funding and through the Department of Health and Human Services, because they don't know where to start, they don't know how to figure out the paperwork, and the paperwork is huge. I mean, you could, you could probably buy a major building somewhere in the state easier than you can apply for Medicaid here in New Hampshire. Something's got to be done, and I hope that I'll be putting my two cents in soon.
I think, you know, in, in nursing homes, mental health correction system everywhere, the underlying issue we cannot ignore is the workforce, need for workforce. And county nursing homes, that was the big thing in the Hillsborough County, because they didn't have people. They were trying to advertise and to get, you know, and again, it's a vicious cycle in terms of people with addiction, and, you know, they're not able to get people. So I think we still, as a state, we are acutely in need of good youth and workforce, and whatever we can do, however we, and especially city being the most, second largest city, and the largest county, part of the largest county, it is one of the issues, and whatever we can do to kind of work together to have bills that would support and help in terms of workforce, sustaining, bringing new people in, and that would have a big impact. I can tell you as a first-generation immigrant, you know, I can see the community contributing, but it's not enough. And the incoming students, incoming international students, visitors, that has impacted tremendous, tremendously. And that's something, I don't know how we address it. And it's going to affect small states like this, which short-term solution to workforce is inward migration.
I think you were talking more about just healthcare costs and, and...
And nursing homes.
One of them, one part of it is healthcare costs, in that, it, when you balance the cost of a nursing home for somebody to be in there versus what they get for aid, and what is spent for staffing, is some inequities. Of course, with a nursing home, there's a lot of liabilities, and I'm sure a lot of that takes into account, but, you know, they may have one nurse that's overseeing 20, 25 patients, and these are people that need a lot of help, and they're not getting it. They're not getting the help that they should get. They, I can't blame the people that are working there, they do an outstanding job, and they do what they can. But, you know, having been closely related with the, with nursing homes in, like I said, the last two years, I can tell you that they're crying for help. And I think, you know, the state legislature has to do something to help them.
Representative Pla.
Hi, on two of the issues. One on the veterans, I know what you're saying about being a clinic. They have, and this is on the federal level, that Manchester VA, they've kind of dispersed it to various other hospitals, where they have gotten, they can do care there now. So it's the VA doctors are able to care for the doctors in other facility, I mean, for the patients in other facilities. That's something that the state can't do. The veterans bill that they're trying to put through to create a veterans administration is not going to create a hospital, but what it would do is kind of be a focal point to help veterans get care, whether it's to help them get benefits, to help them, so on. The way the VA works is, yeah, I, I worked for them for 26 years, I agree with you. The majority of our veterans either go to the Boston area, because Bedford, even though it's probably the closer hospital, is not really a medical facility as much as it's a geriatric care facility. The, up in the north, they'll go to White River Junction, but that's only really the Hanover area that, that takes care of our patients there. But a patient can go anywhere. Hopefully, they will make a decision as to what they're going to do with the Manchester VA. My angst is that they're going to try to close it. They're going to say that it's useless, just give them vouchers and send them on. The veterans community, I've been working with two veterans groups, they have mixed emotions about it. And again, this goes beyond the state, it's still the federal level on, on that particular thing. I'm not sure that the state can really get involved, other than for us to have resources. Like Massachusetts has a veterans hospital, a state veterans hospital. We don't have that here. We would have to actually create something like that. Like I said, the veterans groups that I've been working with have mixed emotions of whether or not they want to be in a VA, where they're, with their own kind, so to speak, with their uniqueness, versus going into the, the public arena. And they are split on that. As far as the nursing home, our, the Hillsbury, Hillsborough County nursing home, I've worked with them, and one of the concerns were that things weren't getting processed. They'd get kicked back, they, they'd have to reapply every time a patient came in or when the one year was up, trying to get the funding from the state. That's something the state can do. We can try moving that. As far as them not having the resources, when I spoke to them, the bodies aren't there to hire. They put out applications, they have job fairs, they're just not getting it. Again, that's something the state can do. I know we did have legislation at one point to try to help with the cost of the education, and most of them failed. So in that case, yes, I think the state can get involved in, in that. As far as the VA is concerned, it's very federal, and unless we create our own state hospital, which many states have, they're going to continue to go out of state unless the vote, the federal voucher program comes through. And I'm not sure that's a really good thing either. Because what happens is, the federal government notoriously doesn't pay on time, and they're not reimbursing these people. And what's happened so far with what they call VA choice, is I spoke to one person who had knee surgery to have it replaced, and the doctor, it took a year and a half to get paid for that knee surgery, refused to do the other one, because he was not a VA doctor. One of our committee members, she was approached by a gentleman who had coronary issues, and the cardiac specialists in New Hampshire said to him, well, you know, you're not critical right at the moment, go to Boston. And basically sent them on to Boston, and refused to do them, because these people are taking anywhere from six months to a year and a half to get paid, and it comes down to the bottom line. So that really is an issue with the federal government, they're failing us.
Yeah, I know that the VA is, is a federal issue, and so I know you...
But the state...
Very little of anything you can do at the state level. And my only concern, as a, as a veteran there, is that if, if you go out and put yourself in harm's way, so that people can actually have the freedoms they enjoy, then if they come back and they're wounded and stuff, and they need help, they should get the best help they can get, and too often, they don't get it. They should be able to go anywhere, Dartmouth, Hitchcock, and get, and get their services paid for by the government.
Yeah. And, and that's actually kind of what the voucher program does, but there's limitations to the voucher program, the way they put it through. What they do is, it took a while to get it through, the choice was each doctor had to apply, like CMC couldn't apply, or Concord Hospital couldn't apply, so that they could give services. Each doctor providing service had to apply. They did kind of streamline that on the federal level, too, to make that a little bit better. I know exactly what you're talking about. I have a, a husband who was drafted in 69 during Vietnam, so he goes through the same thing, also works for the VA. So, yeah, and, and I, I hate to see the dismantling, and I agree with you, they should be able to go anywhere they want. And that's where the veterans groups kind of have a different, the healthier veterans want to be able to go anywhere they can. Many of the veterans with PTSD and mental health issues want to stick together, they want the VA to stay. So there's, you can see both sides of it. So I would like to see, I mean, New Hampshire was given, granted 30 miles versus the actual 50 miles. So that meant they could go to CMC, or they could go to Concord Hospital, or they could go to Elliott. But these hospitals don't want them, because they're not paying the bills.
The, the nursing home might experience it in one of the private nursing homes, not the state-funded, which I can imagine is even worse. One of the problems they have hiring people is that, first of all, you have to be a special person who want to work with the elderly, because it's, it's a tough thing to, to do. And, but they're not getting paid what they would get if they were working at the Elliott.
Yeah.
Not even close. And that's why they have a problem hiring people, is we're not paying them. I mean, at least we ought to try to close that gap, so they can have some chance of getting additional staff.
That's kind of the same problem that we're having with our mental health doctors on the state level. We haven't given them a raise in almost a decade, I think it is, I think it's 11 years. They haven't raised that, and that's why we can't get mental health physicians here. And that is a state issue.
Yeah, I just want to respond to some of the things I just heard about the VA. I go to the VA, I go to specialists that the VA sends me to. The only thing I need is prior authorization. It's not that they don't want to send us, and it's not because they're not getting paid. They, they send me to specialists regularly. I have an appointment coming up with a specialist outside the VA. There's nothing wrong with Manchester VA, nothing at all. They have made great strides in trying to accommodate veterans with the specialized cases that they, they have. You know, I, I can't say anything bad about the VA. The other thing is on the nursing homes. Hillsborough County has the only nursing home in the entire state that's in the black. No other hospital, a nursing home is in the black except Hillsborough County. So, and, and the other thing that you mentioned was White River Junction. White River Junction has closed. There is no White River Junction anymore.
When did that happen? I apologize for not understanding.
About a month ago.
Okay. You misunderstood me. When I said about the not getting paid, I didn't mean the VA wasn't getting paid, I meant that the specials aren't getting paid timely. And your, it may be your doctors are putting in the paperwork exactly the way that they want it. The, the cases that I did in fact speak to, the one from Linda Mazmilla, the cardiac specialist there, it was a year and a half. The gentleman that, that I spoke to from Manchester with the knee surgery, where he wouldn't go for the second one, that was 19 months that he did not get paid. These are the cases that exist. I agree with you. I worked for the VA for 26 years. I don't want to see it dismantled. I think it's the most incredible program, considering the number of hospitals they have throughout the, throughout the entire country, including Guam and Puerto Rico. I think it's the most fantastic system they put through. The first electronic record, I would say nothing bad about them. So if you thought that I did, then that's my apology. As far as the nursing home, you're right, I should have said the Hillsborough is the only one in the black. When I spoke to them in the accounting, and I worked with DHHS, they're still not getting paid timely. They are in the black, and they do a phenomenal job, but they were not getting paid timely. They had some cases that were open for over a year, and that weren't being paid. So you're right on the things that you said, you just misunderstood what I meant. It's just we're still not getting paid. And as far as the not getting, the, the amount of money to mental health doctors and so on, we are paying less than others, so there's no reason for them to come into the state of New Hampshire, when they can go to Massachusetts or Vermont or something like that. And that much you must know, you must agree with me on that.
Yeah.
But, yeah, no, I, I think the VA is second to none. I really do. I know we, we only hear bad things about it, but I can tell you, after working with them for as many years as I did, I started from the bottom, worked all the way up, I was part of the Veterans Integrated Service Network, which was all of the New England VAs. I went from Togas all the way down to West Haven, to Providence, I, I dealt with every single one of the hospitals, and I have nothing but wonderful things to say about them.
Representative Harvick.
Okay, I just want to chime in about the Hillsborough County nursing home, which I have great respect for. It's been run by a great director who recently left, but it is running in the black, and it's great. But among the Hillsborough County delegation, there's great reluctance, understandably, to raise county taxes. So when we don't raise county taxes, or raise them infinitesimally, the services may not get what they need. So the biggest problem that I see at both the corrections center in Valley Street and the nursing home, that we hear over and over and over again, is when they put out word for jobs, opening, opening for jobs, people don't want them because they can get money elsewhere, better money elsewhere. It happens over, they might come there and get trained as newbies, and then they go on, they leave. So I think, again, it comes back to New Hampshire, and we hear this all the time in the legislature, New Hampshire's a very wealthy state and a very cheap state.
Alderman-Lopez, did you ever hand up?
I was actually going to make a comment similar to what was being expressed. In attracting workers to the health field, I think part of what we could do is look at the licensure and make sure that it's not unachievably counterintuitive. If people are working on a licensure requirement that they could go over the border and complete the same licensure for 200 less hours, where they're not getting paid, and they're just spending money on internship costs and that kind of thing, then they're, they're going to do that. So I think looking at the different licensing requirements, and making sure that we stay absolutely competitive in terms of the quality, but not counterproductive in terms of the rigidity, and make sure that we, if we don't have enough nurses, LNA's, or people working with the elderly, then those are areas where those licensures need to be examined, make sure they're not getting in the way of people who are special and want to make a difference, and are, are passionate about doing that type of work, but aren't necessarily special enough to follow every, jump through every hoop that is put in front of them.
Senator Gwazki.
Thank you. I'm glad enough. Um, that...
Yeah, but I think we're, we're being televised, I think, so.
Okay. Alderman-Lopez, that has just been passed in the past, led, in this last session, that if you are licensed in another state, particularly Massachusetts, then there will be reciprocity without going through the added hoops that had been necessary. So, you know, hopefully that will help alleviate some of the lack of, of help that we've had here.
That's a very good step, and I'm glad to hear it. But now my next question is, what I was specifically speaking of was the New Hampshire licensure requirement, so now I'm kind of wondering if people are going to try to get their licensure in Massachusetts, thinking they can transfer it to New Hampshire, and then not necessarily choosing to, because you can get paid more competitively in Massachusetts. So I just, I still think looking at the state, our state's licensing requirements in areas where there's definite need, and making sure that we haven't created a barrier by asking too much of people trying to enter a new field, is something we should do. And then also, making sure that we're retaining professionals by making sure that the licensure we have is necessary and at least consistent with the states around us.
Well, partly, we're going to retain them by giving them a living wage, which we don't do that very well.
Representative Manjapuri.
In continuing with the licensing, and, you know, I just wanted to ask if the clarification in terms of, is the state still underserved, because especially in mental health and healthcare fields, the doctors and mental health workers, psychiatrists, there was acute shortage of psychiatrists in the state, as in general, and particularly Nashua area was, there was shortage, and... And FQAs like Harbor Homes and stuff had a special way of getting people from outside, not necessarily outside the country, but outside the state because there was no reciprocity, federal reciprocity. Or, so that was one of the things that Southern New Hampshire Medical Center was looking at to see if we can have legislation to strengthen that the federal reciprocity for doctors and mental health workers. And I have to look at that bill passed with the reciprocity for nurses and stuff and see if that holds good for doctors too, because the licensing for doctors is a very elaborate process and other states are doing as a federal registry, federal licensing, and that goes across, so.
Alderman Lozzi-Goy.
Yes, I'd just like to follow up on that. Senator Lasky, so the reciprocity you were talking about was across medical licensing, nurses?
It was psychologists and sociology and I'm not sure whether it was through, it wasn't MDs.
Okay, and not allied health professionals?
Because I believe there already is reciprocity with that and that would be up to the Board of Medicine.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may change gears, bring up another different subject matter, but currently to let you know, and you should, but there's a decennial committee that's meeting with the pension system right now that's occurring up there at the state house. Why is that important? Let's look what happened in the municipal budget this year. They wanted to make well, the fast track, or whatever you want to call it, in the pension system to the tune to the city of Nashua, $2 million. If the budget was going up, let's say three million, but we had to take two million to pay the state to cover the cost for our obligations with the pension system. And the state's got to get their money from the city. That would have brought us into a problem. We have a pending court case that we're waiting to hear on and a way that we try to solve the solution here in the city. But the problem is the $2 million obligation still hasn't gone away and it's going to be there next year and the next couple of years. And the problem with that is whose fault is it? Well, we fought two wars and anybody that has a 401K or anything and looking at their own personal involvement in the stock market, you can see now the thing seems to be doing well, but you can see what happened when we went through a period of time. And the pension system relies very heavily on the, on the stock market, just as much as your 401K does. So it is a mirror and does reflect in everything else of what occurs with it. So other changes have been made in positive, but I would like to bring that up as we're going to see what's going to come out of this committee. What is it going to bring back to us in the city from us, our delegation and everything and to our obligations to further into the pension system? Now, I clearly understand we're somewhere around the sixty-seven, if my number is correct, I may not, but it's in the sixties or something like that. I also sit on the pension board for the DPW and we're eighty-three percent. We're seen to be running that, our city pension system with the BPW very well. I don't know what's happening with the four hundred people up at the state. But anyways, I think some changes, we're going to have to watch this particular commission, see what it comes down to. And I'd like to remind the delegation, thirty-five percent of the economic economy that goes to the state of New Hampshire, thirty-five percent comes from the Metro Manchester-Nashua region. Yet, when we come up and breathe things such as commuter rail or other type of things, they don't give us the time of day. Yet the good people of someplace like Bartlett or some other hinterlands where they live, they rely on us for their education. Every lottery ticket that gets sold in the city of Nashua, and how many lottery tickets do you think get sold? How many keno will be played in the future in the city that will go back to some other city and town? So I would like to encourage the delegation to bond together, talk to our friends from other parts. I know Alderman McCarthy and I have a good communication with people that we sit in the house and sit on the automatic board. We worked with the Safe Station Initiatives, one of the things we have done. But talk to your peers up there. Try to sell the Nashua idea, which is, I think, very important. Try to get them to realize that. They don't just roll their eyes and say, oh, there's Nashua again, you know? The Nashua has particular needs. We're the ones with workforce housing. I don't see workforce housing in some other parts of the state, yet it's here. I see we have and very fortunate to have two veterans homes for people who have some difficulties. I don't see them in other communities within the twenty-mile radius on some. So Nashua has broad shoulders and we have done well and we've done our well to be the part of the state. And I think that if we band together and talk to our friends up there and try to get the initiative to come back and try to help us out, particularly when it's going to affect our taxpayers, such as that fast tracking, which didn't need to be done so acutely. But the $2 million annually is a big chunk of, you know, to our taxpayers right here in the city.
I think it's important to note that $2 million is the uplift in this year alone. If you look at the scope of the problem, we believe our actual steady-state contribution to the pension system to keep it running is $8 million a year. The check we're writing this year is for $23 million. There's an additional $15 million in the get well costs for the pension plan that is, and that uplift of 15 million has come over the last six or seven years and has been a tremendous burden in a capped budget to be able to do anything else that the city needs. Alderman Lozzi-Goy.
Just to Alderman O'Brien, or Representative O'Brien's comment about working together with your fellow representatives. If you look at what's happening in Southern New Hampshire, we are starting to come together more and more as a larger regional group. You look at our bus system and, you know, what we're doing with Milford and interest in working outside of the city limits. So not only are we generating the additional dollars from Nashua, because of what's happening in this region, we're generating even more dollars. And it's important to, I think, work with people within the region, from Milford, from Hollis, from Brookline, from Hudson, from Litchfield, and say, look, we as a region are starting to share some benefits and some concerns and we need to band together to make sure those dollars are flowing here. I mean, I have people in Hudson say to me all the time, what's going to happen when that development goes in on Bridge Street? And I'm like, well, there's a plan for a rotary. So it's, it's really, really important, I think, that we start looking outside of the city of Nashua and start thinking more regionally because we are working more regionally and things are happening across our region. So I think that's another piece that we need to look at as we look at what dollars are being generated, not only in Nashua, but in Southern New Hampshire, just within our region that's covered by the Regional Planning Commission. What's being generated here and how much of it is coming back to address keeping our economic engine going?
I think there's also, when you look at Nashua as the anchor for the region, there are a lot of services that are provided by Nashua. We're the major source of social services and of, you know, safety nets, et cetera. And unfortunately, the cost of that is borne solely by the Nashua taxpayers, even though we're providing a regional service. At some point, I think there has to be some way to deal with that. And in fact, revenue from the state would normally be the way that would be handled. Alderman Jenny.
Alderman-elect.
Alderman-elect Jenny.
I'm not there yet. On a slightly different tack, but kind of along the same lines, what is the feeling among the delegation about this bill that is coming up about the scholarship program where people can apply to this nonprofit scholarship program and get money? That scholarship program can take money from the city that is, that the state provides for, you know, to the city to educate students. Take, take that money and give it to a private individual to homeschool their child or send their child to a private school. Where does that stand and how is that going to affect us, we taxpayers in Nashua?
Senator Gwoski.
Alderman-elect, did you mean by having public funds going to private and religious schooling? The bill that was just passed out of committee, is that, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
I for one am wholly against it. I think if this continues, it could be the death knell for public education. I think we support alternative schooling. I think there is, you know, an obligation for that, but for public funds to go to religious schools and, and private schools, I think is, is a violation of the separation of church and state. And it is, again, going to hurt our public schools where I believe the fund should go, yes, to address problems within the public schools and problems that they have, but they're never going to get fixed if we continually take away from what, what they need to have. So I will, will fight that, that bill or if it should come forward.
Senator Manjapuri.
Just in that lines in terms of funding that goes away, the way I understand it is when every dollar that's taken out of public school, say if a hundred students come out of public schools where 12,000 students are serving, they come from sixteen different schools, parts of it. So the infrastructure, the maintenance and the staffing cannot reduce, but the funding is being drained from the public schools. So we have to look at the bigger picture. It's like, it's not about, and, you know, I for one is totally against it because it only takes a small portion. If I get, or my child gets $2,500 to go to a private school, show me which good public, private school takes $2,500 to educate my child. And it's, it's not quality education that we can, it's just a, you know, it's a feel good, this is, we are doing the right thing, we are giving the parent a choice, but we are not giving the parent a choice. And we are depleting the resources that's coming to the public schools. And the infrastructure, the funding system for staff and all that cannot be cut in public schools with hundred or two hundred people going away from that. So, and that aspect, I think we have to highlight if the delegation is not on board, because as we said, we have to come together as a delegation of a city of this size. And as long as we can back that up and it's, it's about what's good for Nashua, and then, you know, it's, it's not about party line.
Senator Manjapuri.
Hi. The issue that I have with it is we have a constitution that basically says that we cannot use tax dollars for religious schooling or anything of that nature. I think we kind of play a game because we have our education fund that is, comes from lottery and so on, other kind of money. So they can probably play the word game and say they're not using tax dollars for it. But the bottom line is we're still funding religious schooling and so on, so I'm very much against it. I would be fighting as much as I possibly can, but it's come out of committee and we'll see where it goes from there.
Alderman Lozzi-Goy.
I would just like to make a comment. About two months ago, you couldn't go anywhere and talk to anyone who had even a slight sense of what was going on in the state, who wasn't talking about Amazon and where they were going to be and New Hampshire's chance of landing Amazon. And I listened on the radio one morning and to my surprise, heard the governor talk about, well, we'll, we'll start investigating rail because Amazon wants rail. And I think there are many of us in the city and across the state who have understood that rail is important. It's an economic driver. And we all hear about millennials not wanting cars, but I'll tell you what, when I go to a city where I have good public transportation, I don't rent a car. I use the cabs, I use the buses and I use the subways. And I don't even need my smartphone. I can walk up and read it, figure out which stop I need, and, and it works. And when I'm in a country where English isn't the major language, I can read the map and figure out where to go. But we all knew rail was important and all of a sudden, we're going to start looking at rail instead of being kind of shovel-ready and knowing what we were doing. And I, I bring that up because we moved here twenty years ago and in some ways it seems like I've been here forever and in other ways, we're quite new here. But one of the things we did when we looked at where we were going to live in relationship to where my husband was going to be working at Lockheed Martin, because we were coming here with a five-year-old daughter and we hoped to be here to get her through sixth grade, now she's 26, graduate of Nashua High South. But when we came here, we didn't say, what are the parochial schools like? What are the private schools like? We said, what are your public schools like? And to this day, when I meet young families and talk to people as we're traveling, one of the questions that comes up is, what are the public schools like in Nashua? Just walking my word, I ran into a family with a little girl in a stroller. She was probably eighteen months, two years old. And we had this conversation about the public schools and they said, yeah, our neighbors up the street, they send all their kids to public schools, so we're feeling good about the public school here. So I think we need to think about everything we do with a bigger lens and realize that it's not just, I want my child to be homeschooled, I want to go to parochial school. And I have to say, many of you know, and I remember before the event, it was the same month my daughter started at Nashua Catholic. I paid for it, it was my choice. She went there and then she went back to South. But we have to realize, public school's important. When people are moving into communities and buying homes and if you've moved, you know all the expenses of setting up a new household, having a good quality public school is really, really important. And it's important for our neighborhoods because that's where our kids get together and that's where we get together as families and form community. So I would just encourage you and encourage you to have conversations with your colleagues about the benefits of public education and the importance of public education from an economic development perspective. Because the checklist isn't, how many good parochial schools are there within 50 miles? Where are my, my employees going to send their kids? Because they probably don't want to pay their employees to pay tuition either. So I would just leave there if you think about it in a broader sense.
Senator Gwoski.
This country has been founded on, or one of the things I believe that has made this country great over the years is our public education system and is the fact that regardless of what religion you are, what, you know, ethnic background, whatever, you are entitled to a public education. That is not the case. If you choose to send your child to a private school or a religious school, so be it. All, you know, more power to you, each kids. I myself sent my... I myself sent my girls to private school, there were extenuating circumstances, and each child has individual needs. We need to, I believe, instead of trying to take away from our public school system, I believe I said it before, is to make sure it is the best that it can be for every child in this state and this country. We are depleting it, again, by trying to make it fairer for those who choose to send their children elsewhere, have the opportunity to send their children elsewhere. But it's not, in my mind, it's not what education should be in this country. So, again, you know, I respect, we have charter schools, I respect, we are trying to do our best to make advantages for each child in this state because they are all different. But I do not believe it should be at the expense of our public school system.
Representative Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's pretty clear that this bill is a priority for the governor. I think that that's a real danger up at the State House, and I think anything anyone can do from this table to talk to people and let them know about the problems with the bill, the bill is faulty. It's been stated that by the Chair of the Committee as they passed it. They said the bill was faulty and they'd fix it later. I think we have to make sure that we spread the word that this is not a good bill for the state, but more than that, this bill is just simply a bad bill and should never become law. Thank you.
Anything else? Representative.
This be the appropriate time, Mr. President, to make an announcement about the Hillsborough County Executive Committee.
About the what?
The Hillsborough County Executive Committee. We have accepted two ratified contracts from the Nursing Home Union and another, I forget what union it's from, and we have accepted them and determined that we will pass them on to the Hillsborough County Full Delegation. So I'm looking at January 10th at 6:00 in the evening as the next possible full delegation meeting to ratify those contracts.
Any other topics we'd like to go on? It's 8:30-ish. Are these meetings useful, or should I have another one in three or four months when we get into the session? Alderman down?
I think they're useful, but I wish we could get more of the state delegation here. I think I only see one Republican, I could be wrong. Two, three.
Are you even there for the Republican delegation?
No, no. Representatives. Okay, two Republicans and, well, better yet, how many are here?
I thought I saw controversy unfolding.
How many are here versus the total number from Nashua?
We have 29, 78 rep, state reps.
Total of 29.
Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Adventure to guess, we don't even have half here.
It's not half.
Is there a better time of day maybe to meet for state reps?
Nine, nine or 10 o'clock.
That's a pretty wealthy in the evening.
Thank you. A couple of things. One, I was remiss in stating that I represent Ward Three, so I wanted to clear that up. I have a couple of questions, I think. What is Nashua, the city of Nashua? Their biggest issues that they would like we, as the state delegation, to understand? Two, how do we come together with the aldermen and the delegation when there's an issue? There's legislation right now, I think it's HB 92, and that has to do with the building codes and updating them to the 2015. And I know Bill McKinney, Nashua's building inspector, is very concerned about that. And as we all should be, we need to update our codes. When is a good time to be able to have meetings so that we can bring together the aldermen and the state delegation to have a conversation so when we go up there, we can stand united and say, this is a city issue, and we need to bring it forward as a city issue? I would like to be able to help in that cause. And so that's just for me. As for day and time, maybe the holiday had an effect on this particular meeting. Sometimes it's easier in the morning. I've seen more people get together in the morning around breakfast time. But again, I think as the weather gets nicer, it's easier later, but I still think that earlier is sometimes better.
So I'll address a couple of things you said. With regards to things like the bill on building codes, we've had a lot of discussion about what the role of the Board of Aldermen should be in state legislation. And in fact, on most of the things that deal with departments, we actually kind of trust those opinions to our professionals. And I would encourage the delegation to meet with the building code officials. And in fact, we have the same issue with the City Clerk's Office often. We have the same issue with the Assessor's Office because there are lots of bills that come up every term that are highly technical, and for the most part, we would rather have the staff give you expert opinions than us give us our, give you our opinions. It's the policy bills that we're concerned with. From that perspective, well, it's mostly about the money. If I go back and look at where we are now versus where we were 20, 30 years ago, we got, we were originally promised $20 million in a grant to build the CTE program at the high schools. We never saw a nickel of it. We were promised 30% reimbursement on the principal of the bonds to build the two high schools. We might have seen 15% some years. Often, we saw nothing. You know, there's just, the downshifted costs and the things that, where we made a decision based on what the funding was going to be, and it then dried up, have shifted a tremendous burden onto the city. You know, the retirement system, as we talked about, there's probably $30 million plus in today that wouldn't have been there had, had things stayed the same as they were when we made those decisions. You know, we're pretty good at working around that and not blowing the tax rate up while paying for that ever-growing burden. But those are the things, I think, that affect us the most. The other one, as was mentioned, is rail. You know, it would be great to get help from the state, but under the current circumstance of us having the memorandum of understanding with the Boston Service Rail Transit, I guess as a secondary ask, what I'd ask is that the state not get in the way of a solution we found on our own. And I am very concerned that that could happen.
I hope that that does not happen. I concur. We absolutely need to have rail.
And, you know, we've found a solution that may not be optimal, but it is better than every other one in that it may come to fruition. So, you know, and the guys that are looking at it are doing Worcester to Providence now, they're looking at Bedford to Lowell for us, and then they're going to look at Lowell down to Worcester eventually, which will give us some very good access to places we don't currently have access to. So I'm happy about that. My concern is, you know, that if the Rail Transit Authority as it is gets in the middle of that and makes decisions that it thinks are for the greater good, that mess up that arrangement, I'd be very disappointed with that having been the final outcome of the work we've done, so.
I think I would be too.
Alderman Woski.
Yes, I will just be brief. Representative McKay, I totally appreciate the difficulty with evening meetings, but I will say too, some of us have night jobs or day jobs, and night meetings are what we do.
And you're right, I get it. It's really difficult to try and get people to come together. We probably would have had a better representation. Again, I think a lot of tonight's issue is the holiday. So I concur. Sometimes it's really easier to have people at night. It just, it's hard to choose.
Senator Woski.
Thank you. I have a question. Do we have a liaison anymore with the legislature from the city? I don't believe so. Correct?
I don't know what, Ms. Kleiner can probably address who's there from the mayor's office. We have actually got, our legislative assistant, one of her duties now is to take care of that for the board. So we actually send her up to testify at hearings.
And it is, to me, it's more of the communication between the city and the legislation that's coming forward. The other thing, I know in the past, we used to have a meeting with the department heads and the delegation where they would get into maybe, you know, specific bills. And I think that's always very helpful. I think where we have newer aldermen and, you know, we're in the middle of a legislative session, so we don't have, you know, no one in the legislature is brand-new. But at any rate, I believe there are a lot of people who have not been to various departments, not seen a lot of the agencies and a lot of the people that we work with. And that is really important because you have to understand. The other thing, the last thing, I'm sorry, Brian, I want to say is that we are sent here, we are sent to Concord by the people of Nashua, and in some cases, you know, the center is, the other center is the surrounding area. Too often, I have seen our representatives put their leadership first, their party first, and many other things before the citizens of this city and the people who have sent them to represent them. And that, to me, is the hardest thing. If we stuck together, when, you know, when it arises, yes, there will always be a few, but when we know that our city and the people in our city are going to benefit from certain things, and we say no because someone else is breathing down our necks for a parking place, or a chairmanship, or some other ridiculous thing, then none of us deserve to be representing the citizens of this city.
Representative Manjapuri.
Just to acknowledge that this session particularly, as a rep, I did get a lot of information, auditably support from the city or City Hall and, you know, mayor's office or if, you know, several times, I would be on the floor and this is going this way, the bill is, and this, how it's going to affect Nashua, dollars as well as in terms of policy. It was very, very helpful, even though we don't have a particular liaison. And to get that information and send it back to, you know, share it with Nashua delegation there, at least the people that are sitting around. So they were very, very helpful. And I think these meetings, at the end of the day, we are still social beings. And as much as we can live off of Facebook and social media, at the end of the day, meeting in flesh and blood makes all the difference because you put the humanness into this. So I thank you for keeping this consistent, and it means a lot to me, and to represent the voices of my constituents and also as a city where my home is. So I thank you for that.
Ms. Kleiner, you want to update us on who's?
So we did have a liaison, Derek Danielson from the city. And Derek has left the city, unfortunately. So what we have been working with, with our IT department, is an automated process where the city can download all the bills where they are, send those out to our division directors to get information back from them, like Alderman McCarthy was saying, to get that expert advice on bills. Last year, we sent emails to the delegation. We got a lot of feedback on that, that it was too tedious of a spreadsheet. I think at that time, it had over 100 bills on it that we were tracking through committee. This year, we expect it to be much more streamlined, and we expect those emails to start going out shortly. Certainly, there's some bills at the city that we're discussing already. We've had quite a bit of discussion on SB 193 in the mayor's office and with the superintendent. But those delegation emails will go out again shortly, once we get the automated process back from our division directors.
And as I said, I have our legislative manager, we did just hire a new transcriptionist, by the way, so some of her time is freed up again. But she is, one of her responsibilities is to work on, at least the policy bills for the board, so we'll do that. I also want to point out, there was discussion about the department heads. One of the things we do when there's big turnover in the Board of Aldermen is to have oriented the early part of the term and have the department heads come in and talk about them. So while I want to keep that focused on the Board of Aldermen getting it, I'd be happy to let the delegation know, and anybody's welcome to come and listen to what happens.
Thank you.
Alderman McCarthy, I also want to say, I believe some of the representatives have participated in the Citizens Academy. I think I've seen some of you there, and I know people had very positive feedback about that also as a way to really learn more about the city.
It's a long program, though.
It is, it is, but I know that some people commented they felt it was well worth it.
Alderman, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to say, I've been in the House twenty years through the liaisons and everything else. I like to compliment this administration because being in the House for, you know, like you say, eight to 10 years, I've already, I think I've gone to much more delegation meetings already than I have in the past, so strongly encourage that. But again, let's look at the House. People can write, there's 400 of us, people can write a bill, there's 400 bills. They write two bills?
Eight hundred.
Some, the other one, well, the whole ball, there you go. So which ones are?
Really, I appreciate that, and if you have something, it's got to.
Screenwriter, brilliant. Share with the state, in our opinion.
But the thing is, we should really just focus, it's got to be important to us.
And I would like to follow up with that, screenlining. If you can put an opinion, okay, people are going to vote by what they are entitled to vote, okay? But if the city comes out with an opinion on how it affects the city, it can weigh the balance to the representative to kind of help them make that particular choice, you know? Because, yes, unfortunately, it would be nice if everybody voted for Nashua, but sometimes people do get leaned on and on towards different things like that. So I would like to have, you know, within to be an email or something like that, the national perspective to it, that representative can weigh the balance and say, no, I'm a Nashuan person, I got to go with this, the way it should really be. So I would like to see that.
You know.
Contact. Now, I kind of understand if anybody here with the state delegation, we're very careful with the municipal side.
And our emails and everything else. But I'm sure everybody that's in the state delegation sees what gets out there in the state emails. It's almost, I don't know if they ever heard of the right to know, or what, so it's a matter of very lax out there. But it's a form of communication that we can get from that, from the city, that can bring that in. And you can send it to the whole delegation. I think we could really weigh the balance on where that would go, because that's really going to help us. There's nothing, and we've all been there. What does the city think about?
And, you know, you got to win at that particular point. And, you know, you've got to win at a definite point in time, and if you don't have a contact.
Person that is up to the contact, have the email beforehand and the research.
And I understand the yeoman's work, it's going to be taking and doing this, you know what I mean? Like I say, if everybody writes two bills, there's eight hundred.
Bills right there, so.
And that's not going to.
It's coming over from the Senate.
The other thing, Mr. President, is the important thing is crossover time, to pay particular attention to that, because that's when.
The bills from the House will go over to the Senate, and we will now receive the Senate's version, which will be a whole different format of bills, maybe new, you know, stuff that we weren't really watching, you know, from the House side. So, that'd be equally important there, too, so.
Okay, is there anything else? I have a motion from one of the aldermen. Alderman down.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and we're adjourned at 8:50.